There we go.
All right.
Try that again. So, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee, February 11th, 6:00 PM. All of us are here. We do have minutes to approve. Are we able to review those? Okay, so we're going to understand the motion.
I'm checking those.
Second?
Okay, those in favor?
All right.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak on public speak time? Something that's not on our agenda? I think that maybe all of you are here for the engine brake. So, okay, so then we will... Anybody else? No? Okay. So, let's start with the engine brake ordinance proposal.
Chair.
Yeah.
Do you know, I have a prior commitment at seven, so if it doesn't pay with you...
It's not a problem.
...if it doesn't pay with you, disclose that.
That's great. So, I think where we kind of finished up last time was we had gotten recommendations from the fire chief and we had, you know, looked at potential areas in town that would be more appropriate and talked about maybe a phased implementation, talked about maybe going in all at once. So, and it seems like we have some people here tonight that might have some information that could be helpful in this deliberation.
We did ask the police department, and they found something that's to get into the regular process here.
Okay, welcome.
Hi.
So, what did we find?
It was very interesting, and particularly regarding state highways. And Sergeant Ross can explain a little more. In fact, we had a class, I guess, or a meeting, and there were state police officers, I think, and highway, other highway people. And please...
Basically, what happened was a commercial people training class, and we discussed this other towns put order which is in, but to put it on the state highway, like Route 141, Route 10, you have to get approved from the state.
Correct.
So, if we don't currently have an asset, I don't believe we are after that. So, we wouldn't be able to do that in those areas right now, for sure. So, some of the streets that were listed and discussed, we'd have to probably wait, or more work would have to be done to get approval and have a state that appropriate have it posted at that point.
Correct.
That's basically what I ascertained from that. It's Holyoke Pride, and then they, that's an obstacle that they may introduce.
And what's the state's policy on it?
That, I'm not specific how to apply for it, but I can find out.
Okay.
Right now...
But there's no restriction?
There's no restriction, I know, but you'd have to get approved from the state.
Okay.
And they didn't grant it in the Hoylex case?
They didn't, from what I know, now, they didn't put down that road as a...
Was that going down 141?
No.
No?
I don't know where it was in Hoylex. They knew it was a state road, they just decided not to do it there.
Interesting. They might have moved us to look here, to...
Yeah, we'll look at it after. We'll go to the original Florence Road.
Mm-hmm.
Well, definitely, of course, it's gonna happen.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I guess the big thing is just, if we knew what the state was going to do, it would definitely make it easier in terms of designing signage, right? Like, if it says, like, "No engine brakes on this road" versus "No engine brakes citywide", or "No engine brakes except for on these streets", like, just, I, you know...
I'd like to, I think it might be good to do some more.
For that, I know in Westfield where they have, I think, East Mountain Road is one of the roads in Westfield that has signage, and the signage says "No engine brake on East Mountain Road".
Right.
Really, pretty specific, pretty clear. And we implemented one that said "No engine brakes on Florence Road". Look at the signage. It's very specific. And also, look up Florence Road, as soon as you go into Northampton, there is a sign for engine brake. And so, you know it's legal, and it's good, and it's assumed. But the truck traffic in the last three years has really been getting out of control, especially with the big dump trucks. And they rip along on Northampton, they don't slow down, and the first thing they do, especially in the summer months, they throw a brake sign. And there's always a few characters that have to do it three or four times, and they now may not put them. Makes the neighbors, you know, breaks the peace in different times of the day. Now, the police department has been doing speed control, which helps out. And they put the temporary signs, and that certainly makes a difference, but of course they're, you know, temporary. So, if we could have something on Florence Road to be able to try to slow these trucks down somehow, we would agree. And then, like you said, if you don't want to go through the state, like, easier, because we know it's legal from Northampton, because they have a sign on Florence Road.
That's exactly.
So, one thing to point out, as we were talking about excluding from the mountain highways...
Yeah.
We don't even worry about applying to the state for 141.
Correct.
Just sitting here, thinking about some of the conversations we've been having about this now and previously, you know, one strategy to consider, and this is kind of close to what Officer Kuzinski was saying, is maybe thinking, looking at the city as a whole and thinking about which areas to specifically include, as opposed to having a broad restriction and then excluding.
Mm-hmm.
So, looking at their streets and really which ones, on which streets are engine brakes a problem, putting signs there, as opposed to having just a broad catch-all to restrict them throughout the city, and then exclude certain areas. So, it'd be something, you know, so Florence Road, obviously, you know, being a small size, it's...
I think it'll be fine. And I think we do need to also, like, acknowledge the exemptions that would need to exist.
I propose some language that makes sense. Essentially saying engine brakes are prohibited on Florence Road entirely, except for emergency use or when used by emergency vehicles.
Okay.
Kind of rough on Saturdays, too, when people try to sneak in and then think it could black down on the hill.
It shakes the whole house.
And, no, Scott.
Yes?
Let me, this, Scott McCarthy. What's your address?
57 Ward.
How would this affect, like, DPW types of trucks?
Well, they, they have them.
They do?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I talked to before, we'll not hear about it. It's not the engine brake that causes the disruption of noise, it's the altered exhaust systems on the trucks. If you go right now to a truck dealership, and you get in a truck, and you drive it down the road, and you turn the jake brake on, or engine brake, whatever you want to call it, it's gonna be relatively quiet, probably not existing. It's the people that alter their exhausts. A little different on a motorcycle, a car. The engine brake, I don't know if you guys know how it operates or not, you know, through... When the engine has four cycles, intake, compression, power, exhaust. When you have the engine brake on, on the power cycle, it's not putting the pressure down on the piston. It opens the exhaust valve and lets the exhaust, or the fuel mixture, go out the exhaust, so the engine isn't creating power. So, the noise is coming from the lack of mufflers. If you see a truck going down the road, and it's got an exhaust pipe on it, about the size of a paint can, that's not a legal exhaust.
And every truck has to have an exhaust?
Yeah, they have to have an exhaust.
They have them, of course. If they don't have it, it's a violation.
Right, and most of the vehicles that are allowed don't have exhausts.
Right.
On the other hand, if all these other towns post signs to say "No engine brake", it's having a reason.
People say the people don't want to hear the noise, but it's not, it's not the engine brake or the honest truck drivers, people are making altercations of their vehicles. Engine brakes control trucks and large vehicles.
I'd like to be up a lot of ways. I'd like to be able to try it and see if something works. Maybe I can just put these people, maybe they can slow down.
And when I think, I mean, I think the idea here is that if there was no engine brake, then people that maybe had altered exhausts wouldn't use it in those areas if they, if they knew that there was a risk of them getting fined.
Yeah.
And now, enforcement. What are your thoughts on enforcement?
I'd like to do more education and get it. We could sit out there, pull some of the trucks over, and basically discuss whether the signs are there, because if they drive that road every day, they may not even see the sign.
Right, I don't know.
So...
Either that or they don't pay attention to it.
Or don't pay attention. And, you know, as like everything else, you know, the numero uno, they're out there, do some enforcement and educate, and after that, search over to some fines, or warnings, or so on, documents, and do that. Clarification and enforcement, and establish it that way. One thing, as you were talking about slowing people down, that's exactly what the jake brake does, so it slows your people down. You're asking them to slow them down, and now you're telling them not to use the jake brake.
Well, if you weren't going on that path...
And I understand your side of the noise happening, so...
I actually think part of the problem is, we're all talking about coming down the road, and it's, you know, it's like, they're going too fast before they, you know, then they try to slow down. If they can go to speed limit, they're gonna stand, they're gonna be there.
So, a sign posting at the beginning of Florence Road, entering from Northampton, and it looks critical.
The signage up there, I'm surprised the police department know about this. As you come up the hill, you've got Lyman Road on the right, and you've got Bassett Bluff Road. No signs at all at any intersection, and nothing, so, so people down from that around, they have no idea that there's a good intersection, that there are a lot of accidents, severe accidents, and that, and people who signed it would help, they'd slow people down. That's exactly.
Yeah, not to get too much of the weeds, but I can attest to that, that driving, entering Florence Road from Lyman Road quite often, if there was a sign that said "Vehicles entering from the right", people fly up that hill, and I can't think how many times I, I turn the Florence Road, and all of a sudden, there's a set of headlights behind me. But that's, that's really off the, it's not really what we're talking about here, but, yeah. I mean, although it does seem to me that the real, the issue is more noise and speed, and possibly the use of these brakes.
Right. With noise and speed being the primary. One question I have is if, and maybe you, you could speak to this, if you've got trucks up there, commercial vehicles or whatever, and they're not using their engine brakes, is that going to have any ramifications, either in terms of their ability to safely operate the truck, or in terms of, like, sort of wear and tear on the vehicles?
Well, well, the engine brake helps a vehicle maintain control. That's why if they're, they're on there, it's, you know, for reducing your speed, helping your brakes. A lot of your construction vehicles, I would say, probably carry the most weight, more than a tractor-trailer carrying freight or something, usually they're not full to capacity, but like a construction vehicle, whatever, usually is full to capacity. And that's, you know, probably, I would assume, the biggest complaint here. But, as a resident of town, you know, vehicle, I've been in this over 20 years, engine brakes help heavy vehicles stop. When you do not know, use them, there is a tremendous stopping power loss, like you wouldn't believe. I mean, if you went onto Jacob's Engine Brakes website, they have a video on there that you can watch, and it explains the use of a jake brake. And the last, like, 30 seconds of it says, "With modern technology, emission systems, exhaust, the jake brake is pretty much undetectable, under stock conditions. But when you alter the vehicle, it's where the problem comes in." I don't know if there's a noise ordinance or not here in Southampton, I'm not sure if the police department can, you know, you hear a loud vehicle coming, maybe, you know, they'll get that. Hey, it's loud, it's loud. So, it's stressful, or whatever.
If you're talking about, like, these, like, just standard construction vehicles, those ones presumably don't have sort of modified, super loud exhausts?
A lot of them do.
They do? Oh, interesting.
People think it's cool, you know? So, driver thinks it's cool. Cut my exhaust up, and I put straight pipe inside it, I want to be cool. It's no, no different than a child putting a playing card in the spokes of a bicycle. You're making noise, you're, you're looking cool. That's, that's all it is.
Yeah, Counselor here.
And a question, Mr. McCarthy, because I'm, I, and I'm, thank you for coming in, because that was one of my questions at the last meeting, was I just don't know enough about this. How do, how do you turn on or turn off these braking systems? Is it a switch, or like a lever?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you, did you...
You can choose to have it off and on.
And if you suddenly need an emergency situation, you can just switch it on, and we'll need to retake it back?
Yeah. But in an emergency situation...
Oh, I know, I'm just trying to understand.
Like, in an emergency situation, the last thing a truck driver's gonna be thinking about is turning their engine brake on. They're gonna be trying to figure out how to bring that vehicle to a stop.
Right, right.
Is it legal to exhaust, to change the exhaust system, like you're saying?
No.
I mean, Sergeant Ross would be able to answer that.
Yeah, they go through annual inspections.
Yeah.
And it depends, if the truck's in mass, they have to move through a mass inspection. It's another state, they have to comply with a state, the truck is registered. But in mass, you have to have a, you have to have an exhaust system.
So, they switch it back to pass inspection?
If the day of the inspection, it goes in an inspection bay, and it meets mass requirements, and we get a sticker. If they modify it after, we stop it. At that point, it can be set, you know, the proper exhaust, oxygen injection laws of the 1960s, and so on, and so on. But at the inspection point, if it has, meets the requirements, then it gets a sticker and it goes out.
So, if I may ask a question, if you're out on the road, and, you know, the signs been posted, and you're, you're out checking, somebody uses their engine brake, and if it's perfectly safe, and legal, and on properly, you're not gonna hear it, according to what Scott said.
On some of the newer, the new trucks, the BEF and the muffler, the exhaust...
And you're not gonna, and you're not gonna stop them, of course.
No, not now.
You know, because they're not, not being obnoxious to the...
But if it was modified, then you would be aware of it.
If it was modified, yes, then you'd hear the different noise, and the older trucks, you'll put this on. And there are levels you can set it to. You can have it all the way on, so you don't have to alter it, sort of like a gear volume and different levels.
I think it sends a message to the drivers, be respectful of our neighbor.
Yeah, that's a good question. So, if we're gonna, if we're talking enforcement, Sergeant?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how would you know that someone's using their engine brakes or not? Again, just noise, potentially, maybe?
Potentially noise, and also, when they let off the gas, if it's on, it's gonna engage right when they let off the gas. You're gonna hear a change in the exhaust, and it'd be, at that point, it'd be nose-to-the louder. As a technically, myself, I'm certified as a DOT inspector, I don't need a reason to stop the truck. If I want to do an inspection, I can just stop the trucks and do that. So, I don't need a pre-existing condition or violation, or suspicion or violation. I can pull it in simply for the inspection. And if we do go with this ordinance up there, that's something I can possibly do, is be up on that road, and whether they're using it or not, I can talk to them, hold them over a few minutes, talk to them, not violate their rights to do an inspection, and send them on.
Is that true for all police officers?
No.
Just, just you, or...
No. Just, just myself, I'm, you need to certify DOT inspectors.
Okay. And is, is that true for all modifications as well? Like, I know that some diesel trucks have modifications to, like, belch big clouds of smoke?
Like roll calls, or being as a kid...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. With regards to that, it'd have to have something in my presence, to be that there's a set of inspections that I do, and exhaust is not. That way, we take it up at the annual inspection, and it's done that way.
So, currently, if someone did that, that wouldn't be against?
No.
Interesting. It's good to know.
Yeah, I mean, my, yeah, that's my biggest question. And then, would you, so, if you cited someone for use of engine brakes in a, in a potential area that we, let's say that we restricted them, would you be able, how would you be able to prove that they were using them?
I would basically, on the change in the noise that it makes, also, once I stop the truck, I'd be able to look inside the cab and see if the switch is on or off. But, at least if they know it, then...
Switch it off, that's what I was gonna say.
Switches out.
There's a sign.
Yeah, so, you know, like, you see it on, or you see it off, or, you know, if you go by me, I may hear the noise, but when I stop you, you know, and so forth, it's only to shut it off.
And then you'll have a conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's, I think, the whole point of this, is to give, you know, really the authority and say, listen.
Right, and the other thing is, you know, we could, you know, go to trucking companies within the city, that maybe see frequently use that, and have a conversation with the owner, and then they could have a conversation with their employees prior to doing that. We go around to the bigger trucking companies that are in town, who up that road, we can sit out there, you know, make a list quickly, okay, I see X company, Y company, Z company. Well, X and Y are in our town, I can go and visit that place, or that place of business, and talk to the owner, and then they can talk to their drivers.
One second.
Yeah.
Scott, I have a quick question for you on, on this. One of the things that we're looking at doing is exempting emergency vehicles. Do you think it would make sense to exempt municipal vehicles, so DPW would be exempted from this as well, like plows and other trucks?
Well, on a, a regular day basis, I guess, why would you exempt them and not Joe's Construction Company? They're not, they're doing nothing different, they're not in the emergency...
Well, I think, like, I think, like, plowing would be an essential service that we would want to make sure that isn't interrupted, something like that. Or, you know, a bigger truck for...
If you've got a manufacturer in town that's bringing yours...
I guess. I mean, well, I mean...
You wouldn't want to see that, would you?
I, yes, but as a municipality, I think, you know, if we're talking about plowing, it's kind of an essential service.
Oh, sure.
You know, so...
I wouldn't want to see him not being able to use it. You know, and by DPW, but I'm superintendent, our trucks have them, and our drivers use them.
Okay, so it would make sense to have an exemption for DPW trucks?
I would, I would say, yeah.
Well, I never hear any town trucks.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think it would be a problem, but just to make sure that we don't...
I never hear that, you know, because we check. We're so used to seeing people coming up and down, but I can leave you the list.
Are they mostly commercial vehicles that are coming up, or just like people in big trucks?
Usually, they're going up and picking up sand and grubs, so, once you get into the construction season, it's out of control.
That's exactly.
Well, I was gonna say, sir, you've had a lot of great names to pick. I forget your name, what, I forget your name again?
Rick Holson.
Okay, that's right. And where in Florence Road are you?
Yeah, towards the top, yeah.
Fifty, which one?
Fifty-five.
Oh, right next to the...
Right near the 35 mile an hour streets.
Okay.
It's really great, it's not there anymore.
I wonder if a municipal vehicle could change before emergency?
This is still there, it just needs a better...
This one, so that's the cover.
I think you could add, and the fine for violation, I think, is not...
Pretty scary across, I think, because...
So, I'm sure the fine would be heavier for, for blowing through a crossroad, or something like that.
Yeah, right.
Just what...
With that, yeah.
It's from the state.
Yeah, well, that's a story.
I agree.
So, I would say the fine, I would want to do a little bit more research, because I haven't really touched that part yet. I don't know about you guys?
Well, Hampton, all, both of them.
I would agree with Counselor Peak, I mean, we just have this debate about something that essentially is a life and death situation.
Right, right, please.
Well, we have a, yeah, I mean, that's a discussion outside of, outside of the committee, but I mean, I think that's, yeah.
And I'm...
I mean, to go to what the sergeant was saying, you know, a lot of this is about education, I mean, like, you know, well, you know, I'm sitting there in my living room too, and hearing all the noise, and I'd love for every single one of them to get pulled over and, and they go. A lot of this may come down to doing some community education, and going to some of the local companies, even, even, you know, with or without passage at the door, it's like, this might be good to, to let people know that there's neighborhoods where they're really disrupting, you know, people's lives, but they get a lot of noise, and getting around a lot, so...
I mean, it sounds to me, here's my one thing, it sounds, it sounds like what they're doing, if the exhaust, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, if the exhaust systems are already non-conforming and obnoxiously loud, aren't we all ready to be able to cite people on that for disturbing the peace? Is that in front of making a louder, objectionable noise that you just said, or...
I would do it under 1960, harsh industrial noise.
Okay. So, that, there's an existing ordinance there?
No, it's a state law.
I guess that's my thing, is what I'm, like, I, I think this is a legit problem that we need to address, but I also am worried that we could potentially be crafting an ordinance that's taking vehicles that are, that have like a conforming exhaust system that are not creating a bunch of noise, and you're asking them to put more wear and tear on their vehicles, to potentially operate the vehicles in what might be a less safe situation, even when they're not, when they're not contributing to the problem.
Well, to your, and, and to some of the points here, what I was getting at before is that you may or may not be able to know if a vehicle's, it may be more difficult to detect a vehicle without a modified exhaust system that is, is using engine brakes. You could tell, but I might not be able to, right?
Right, and it's very quiet, yeah.
So, if the real issue is noise and speeding, and there's a way to enforce it...
Right. Maybe we figure out a way to...
Of course, they should have it under control at all times anyways, instead of carrying down over that hill like they do.
Right.
That, that's not a safe place to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and there's a separate conversation that's going on in public safety that I've seen, about sort of having a sort of citywide conversation about what we need to be doing in terms of traffic calming.
Speed mitigation.
Yeah.
I mean, I wonder if, even, regardless of this, the passage of this proposed ordinance, if, if we request, does the police get out to check out Florence Road and do a, do a little bit more? Well, and I know you're already putting speed signs out there, and I also know that you guys are, can only be in certain places at one time, but if we made a specific request of the chief to enforce more noise issues on Florence Road, speeding, while we're still deliberating this, I mean, that could also make a big difference.
Yeah, I'm wondering, maybe, maybe it's a discussion that we...
The other part is, he has this guy, you know, truck company, that is to go and have a conversation with the previous, and say, "Listen, this is what the city is thinking about based on your current actions. If this is not resolved amply or to a level of satisfaction, both by the city and the public, this is the option, and we'll put an ordinance in, and it'll be $300 fine if you found a violation. So, hopefully, we can, rather than make rules and regulations, can we have a conversation, you know, and see if we can possibly do something about this. I mean, we could go out to the truck companies here, I would, I would go to other towns too. If there's someone here, that's a big trucking company, comes through every day, and if the town over, I will go over and spend time over there. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, you know, sitting out there at certain times. Granted, it's gonna get much busier once the summer comes, right? A lot of the trucking companies now aren't probably coming by all that often right now, so it's probably not as an issue as it will be, you know, in June. You know, I don't have a problem with, you know, preempting this now, and so that when June comes, if I already have spoken to, and I also keep a list of who we spoke to, so if, you know, then I can go out and then sit on the road and look to speeding trucks. Commercial drivers, as he will attest to, do not want to get a moving violation and a great deal of speed.
Right, so, his comment, or your enforcement thing, if you, a nice spring day's coming here, hopefully, relatively quick, if he sat on Florence Road for a day and enforced this, whether it's a citation or just a warning, the CD radios are gonna light up, and they're gonna say, "Listen, East Hampton is not taking this, be careful over there." And he might take care of this problem without doing anything.
Right.
That goes right on their DOT number. That goes through every state, all 50 states that, that carry Ghosters, Malz. And like you said, truckers do not want anything on their license.
Right.
Yeah, that's my question.
So, on the other hand, could the South Hampton, Holyoke, Northampton, they are signs, or can we just slap a sign up there, and see it down? I mean, they're on, well, everybody surrounding the community has these signs. Even down the flat down here on South Hampton Road, above Pappy Road, that's as flat as can be, they got a sign up.
I don't know if we could put a sign up if we don't have an ordinance, I mean, I guess that's, I don't know if this sign would have to say that we have an ordinance, I mean, we could just say, I mean, you know, I guess that's something we'd have to talk to the DPW director about, but.
I also just wonder if there's a sign, like.
Like, drive quietly.
Right. If there's, like, if you could say a sign saying, like, trucks using obnoxious noise will be fine, like, you know, whether we need to add new rules or just.
Just state it.
State.
Already enforceable.
Yeah.
Right, because that's what I was gonna say, at the end of the day, we don't want people speeding on the road, making loud noises, right? So, if we found a way to accomplish that, with or without enforcing engine brake, an engine brake law, would that be satisfactory?
Well, as I said, I know that's easier, but, on the other hand, with everybody else having the signs, even if it's just Florence Road, and it's just downhill, maybe, and not doing it uphill, I mean, I think that's what we prefer. What do you think?
It should be downhill, too.
Well, there is a good uphill that I've tried, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we could try, your suggestion first, that, because that would make more sense, I think.
Well, and I think another thing to consider is, you know, even if we acted really quickly and we passed this immediately, the soonest the sign would get out there would be a question mark, because, A, they need the, you know, it would be thought, well, not that it's not done, really, but, but the DPW has a specific budget for signs, and we don't have any control over that, and I think that they have a backlog of signs that need to be, so that sign could potentially not be made until, I don't know, I know that we've waited a long time for signs in the past.
A long time, you have.
Yeah.
With the help of the mayor, there could.
Yeah, with a little pressure, it could, but.
Might set aside.
It's definitely not gonna be instantaneous, this passes or something.
I was hoping that we could have something out for the summer, actually, and I think we need to do it pretty quickly, we want to get it fifty years in motion. Yeah, like those other signs, I put up there forty-five years, and they never really had an intersection sign, you know, for Vanser Road, Lyman, you know, it came as they got thirty-five, thirty-five by me.
And, you know, Owen, did you have something to add to this?
No, uh, no, I was, was the question about, like, what's the, trying to identify the actual problem, and that would solve it.
Sure.
If people just looked at, and they noticed what they.
I mean, at the end of the day, I don't have a problem necessarily with this being put into ordinances, because, I mean, it takes up no space whatsoever, the only, my only questions would be the fine, and making sure that's aligned with everything else. And then, you know, is, is it, are there other ways to accomplish this without passing the ordinance? You know, maybe we should do a multi-pronged approach, you know, so, looking at enforcement piece, and talking to the companies that maybe you have a list of, and then, this is a sentence, really, and if it's restricted to Florence Road, that's not necessarily gonna be too prohibitive to the other aspects of the city, which it doesn't seem like there's a big, necessarily a big problem in other areas of town.
You might even say Florence Road southbound, folks, one's one direction, and then, say, you know, the met word goes out, hey, folks, if Florence Road doesn't straighten out, and you straighten out the rest of the city, in terms of not using our city to make noise with pipes, then you'll see restrictions elsewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a specific objection to that either, just to clarify, I mean, I think that I'm just, I'm just trying to find out, identify what the problem is and figure out, solve it.
Yeah.
And I do also think that the residents who have concerns, or residents of Florence Road, there's no one here from Polio Extreme Division, to identify, but, yeah, I mean, what is, and you're right, so if we pass it, we don't have to sign up, and even if we do pass this ordinance, you still need enforcement out there to enforce it, so, at the end of the day, if there's other ways we can start enforcing this to, that's also a win.
Yep. Thoughts, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm not, I'm not necessarily against, I just, I guess my big concern, well, is that, first of all, it sounds like what, the undesirable behavior is already against the law.
Right.
So, adding it, I'm not sure whether.
Adding another layer of.
Adding another, that also affects some people who aren't contributing to the problem. That, I guess, is the part that gives, that I'm wondering, if either through sort of a more refined ordinance, or just through stepped-up enforcement of the existing law, we could target the behavior that's actually causing trouble without giving a hard time to anybody who's not actually attributing to the problem, that, that's my concern.
And there's, there is a fix for that, but it's super subjective, because you could say excessively loud engine brakes are prohibited, and then people who don't have, but how are you gonna enforce that?
What's excessively loud?
I think that's what I'm, that's what I said, that was inherently flawed.
Now, you need a decelerator, like with tail bikes or motorcycles.
Yeah.
I mean, decelerator, you need a decelerator.
Right.
These tickets that are given to truck drivers, specifically CEO guys, most of them are probably gonna get appealed, so they're gonna go to a clerk, and then they're gonna appeal it a second time to go to a judge, because they do not want it on their priority record.
Right.
Not because it's gonna affect their employability, employability down the road with their employer, so this is something that's gonna get appealed, or possibly appealed, so it's something that has to be written well.
Yep.
Able for me to enforce it well, and if you get into loud versus not loud, I would say that would be very problematic.
That's why I love that it was inherently flawed.
Yeah, yeah.
But how does that get handled with the state law you mentioned?
The House and Justice, they still have the right to appeal in every citation we write, so then, basically, it would be, my report on the first time goes with our court officer to court, it is read in as part of the record to the mag appeal, and then if the violator, the person wants to appeal it again, then it goes to a judge hearing, which at that point, whoever actually wrote the ticket, or officers, if there's more than one, have to go to court, and then we will then speak directly to the judge.
Right.
So, you actually get two chances on that appeal.
But that's probably also gonna be true in the case of just the engine brake, because if they have any sense, they're gonna flip the switch back up by the time you get to the.
Right, that's gonna be a matter of what I heard in my testimony, or the House and Towns testimony, what they heard.
So, I guess it's all somewhat subjective.
Correct. It's, you know, not like you drive, I mean, the headlight out, if the headlight is out, it's pretty cut and dry, your license is suspended, it's suspended, you know, with this, it's, I heard that noise, it's my training experience, that's the jake brake that was running, therefore, it's a violation of city ordinance, right, then the city ordinance can then give them a fine.
So, probably we get appealed, but maybe it spooks them into behaving in the future, or maybe the magistrate takes your word for it.
That's on a case-by-case situation, and each time that you go, so that's, you know, I think the education is a very important piece.
Important piece, too.
I personally didn't know that it's this big of an issue for Florence Road, there are probably other streets that have big, big use too, but I would definitely say I'd wanna go and speak to them, and then see if that, what that has happened, you know, if that's the point, and then sit out there for some days, some mornings, and you can tell us what the high traffic is, or the trucks that seem to be frequent offenders, we could target that time zone and try to be there as much as we can. Obviously, even after we put this ordinance in, in fact that everybody's aware of it as officers, and we won't do it, there'll be times when we can, there'll be times when we can't, so like you said, when we're not there, but he doesn't write about the CD. If I show up somewhere and I start pulling trucks over.
It's gonna, it's gonna spread.
Yeah. So, could we ask the chief to just see if he can allocate, you know, some controls to start even enforcing?
Would it be realistic, do you think that if, if the chief was on board in the next month, that you might be able to get out during one of those high times and observe, and maybe we could come back and, and see how it went?
I don't see a problem with it.
Okay.
I can ask him, and I can report back administratively or whatever, and say, you know, like, well, there, that I want feedback from the community, to say, okay, let's get the, let's bang for our time, and when is the time that you want to stop, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning, when they're making their first call, or is it all day long, when they're there, you know, so we get the most, a lot of trucks in there.
We could set up chairs on the side of the road, have a little block party going on, yeah, I've got a portable grill, I can do that.
We play the farmer. That's funny. And JP, if we, if we held this for, like, thirty days, you know, but, I mean, I would say if this is ready to go, if we just, you know, substitute emergency vehicles for municipal vehicles, I mean, I'd be comfortable with that, but if we gave it thirty days to get a report back from officers that were doing patrol on Florence Road, I mean.
Well, the only drawback I've seen is the level of traffic right now.
It's lower.
It's lower, yeah.
You know, it doesn't start up until construction.
Now, it's usually reflected, you know, you bring it up to speeding.
And I think that if we did.
It was just a concern about speeding, and this ordinance with the jake brake, you were saying there's speeding, well, speeding is a whole separate.
Yeah, it's a whole separate.
So, in the danger of setting up people, cars, everybody's, is probably speeding down that road, not everybody, but quite a few statistically, that's done through enforcement, paying educations, so forth and so on, and then taking the jake brake ordinance, you can tell them to shut it off, not use it, which is something that slows them down, so now they're gonna ride their brakes and their gears to slow down, but.
Or go off, slow, start slowing down.
No, or you give them the yellow, the jake brakes as we use.
Right.
But that, this ordinance in per se isn't gonna slow the traffic down, so.
Right.
That's a separate thing, yeah. That we can do through enforcement, as well as the signs that we have out there, they collect that, and things like that, and we, you know, one thing that I saw, that it can show us different key times, or if we think there's more speed at a certain time, we can dedicate controls to that timeframe of that window, once that information is gathered.
What do you guys think? Pretty, okay, we're, give it thirty days and come back to it? And, because I think, I mean, literally, in thirty days, we could, if we took it up in March, we could bring it to the second meeting in March, I think our first meeting falls before that, and then, I mean, it could be, we need a public hearing for it, so it could be the first meeting of April, if it passed.
Yeah, I'd like to see what, you know, if we can develop a good plan with the police department, it'd be great if we came back in March and found out that the problems, the problem's been potentially solved, and, I mean, I'm not against passing this, I just want it that clear, I just wanna be, you know, it puts a burden on the police, it puts, you know, maybe we have to figure out how to enforce this, you can create a law that is theoretically unenforceable, because it's only enforceable when you guys are there, so.
Right.
If the solution to the problem is less noise and less speeding of Florence Road, that's what I want to accomplish, whether that be passing this law, or just making sure that our police department can figure out a way to solve this for us, and do some preemption to talking to truck companies, so.
Yeah, and I think that piece is the piece, this is a, this is a, an opening of a door, potentially saying, the city's looking at passing this ordinance, your truck company's name has come up, you know, I think that's, that's a really good opportunity, I think, just to shed some light for some of the people that drive through town, so, okay, so let's, let's.
And I'd also just say, I'd be definitely, like, if we have, if we end up passing this, then fine, I'd be interested in hearing from the police department, if you have any ideas about how we could specifically target these non-conforming exhaust systems that seem to be the actual cause of the problem, but if there's, if there's something that we could be doing there, I'd be interested in knowing if there's a way we can help.
Yeah, I think that, that does make a lot of sense, and we could target the diesel engines too in that piece, you know, it's like modified exhausts are prohibited, something like to that nature.
I mean, I think it sounds like they're already in the.
Yeah, or there's a specific fine related.
Yeah.
Scott, did you have a?
My question for you, right? If you go up to a vehicle, a stop, a commercial vehicle, can you photograph it that, at that time it had no mucklers on it, because I mean, clearly you can tell whether it's got straight pipes or mucklers, so if you did write somebody a citation, and they appeal it, they're not gonna, you know, your word against his word, blah, 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 you can bring something, look, if there's no mucklers on this truck.
Right, we could take photos of it at times we do, sometimes the damage crashes, and then that we document, and we document something that's been modified, attach it to the fourth sentence. Ultimately, at that point, it's my testimony, my credibility, that it wasn't there, that muckle wasn't there, we, and, you know, if they wanna say they put it on after, it's just like an inspector, the time was stopped, on blah, 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 at the time, that was not there, you're violating, but that's the end of it there, but there is another way to document it that.
I was just curious, because if nothing works, I think, of that police officer, but if you go through all this, and you find someone and they walk away with nothing, it's sure irritating to you that you're putting all this time into what is not being, you know, not being held accountable.
Right, I mean, ultimately, if the end result is sometimes not necessary, it'll find some type of the education.
Yeah.
They had to go through all this, they had to go to court, that there's some level of stuff and change, and hopefully, going forward, that that muckle stays on, say, for example, the next time I see them, we're a small community, that truck may be down the road again, you know, it needs to be conformed, be in, if it's a violation again, you could pull it over again.
Right.
So, there's that opportunity to.
Good, so, I mean, I think that's probably, let's take this up in March, we'll get it, we'll talk to, we'll see if the chief is okay with that, and I think that would be great, if we can, you know, start the education piece, and then take this up, and I think we could probably, if we decide to push it forward, we could have it done by the first meeting in April, so, all right, well, hey, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Will that meeting be open to the public?
Of course.
All of our.
How will we know with the day?
I'll let you know, well, actually, when, when are we gonna meet, like, starting now?
Yeah, we can set. Okay, so, our first meeting is fourth.
So, that's another.
Yeah, so we don't.
Probably not a great.
We have a public safety meeting on the Tuesday, so we're the fourth and the eighteenth, so, how about the tenth?
That March tenth?
March tenth.
That's, I'm good, you want, are we doing six o'clock?
Six o'clock?
That would be great, appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, no problem, I haven't seen, I haven't seen time this great.
Well, they would like a seventeenth.
No, because I mean. That's it, that's what you said.
This is basically, but also, like, you know, I said, I said, well, actually, that, by that time, I could do a full hour.
You know what, is it better first or second, because we do have a lot of things.
We do, but nothing, I mean, I don't think there's anything that's super urgent, I mean, it's up to, we can always find times to discuss longer.
And if we, you know what, we can also meet the twenty-fourth, too.
Yeah.
So, like, you know, so what we'll do is we'll set the tenth now, and then with the kind of understanding, then we'll probably, we'll meet the twenty-fourth, too.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And I can meet till seven that day.
Are we gonna meet at all, at all, again, this month, or?
Uh, I'm gonna be, we could, I mean, we could meet the week of the twenty-fifth, if we, if we.
I don't think they have any specific constraints, it's just, that's each a week, so I don't.
My only, is, it's playoffs for basketball, which, and we don't have the schedule, so, they could schedule a game, if we set a meeting, they could schedule a game for me, and then, I mean, not that that.
Tentatively schedule, I mean, I just know that there's things.
On the twenty-fifth?
We're not, because we're gonna have to wrap up.
Twenty-fifth might be tough for me, can we do a different day that week?
Well, do you, uh.
Maybe the twenty-sixth, because I'm gonna be coming back to the country.
Twenty-sixth is not a date else we need to.
No.
I'll, I'll text you and let you know. So, definitely that date in March, and I'll let you, I'll let you all know about, if we pick anything else that you know, too. Okay, I can do that, that's an off, that's a day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I think I have.
Yeah, I might not be there much, but, I'll probably speak in Spanish.
Always, and actually, I don't, I don't have, I don't think I have anything else for us.
Well, just let me know.
You wanna just do that, though, or do the twenty-sixth for now?
Yeah, same for now, and if we, if one of us realizes that we have, I'll press.
Yep.
Six o'clock, yeah. Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.